Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. If you'd all rise for a moment of silence and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Welcome to the September 7th, September 14th, meeting of North Hills School District. Just wanted to mention that we did have an effective session this evening prior to holding this meeting, and we talked about legal and personnel matters. We can move forward now with respect to the, we have student performances this evening by school orchestra. And then turn the, turn the floor over to the orchestra.
Hello. We're very happy to be here for you guys today. We're representing the North Hills Orchestra. Mr. Valentine and Mr. Lavelle could not be here today. They're actually practicing for the band festival this Saturday. But today, we do have our elementary strings teacher, Mrs. Craig, and we're very happy to have her today. Today, we will be playing in a traditional string quartet. We have two violins, viola and cello. I'm Olivia Byer. I'm a senior and I'm on cello. This is Emmy Cunningham. She is a junior on viola. This is Sasha Silas Kramer. She is a freshman on violin. And Lexi Mandel is a senior on violin. Today, we will be playing two songs for you. The first one is very upbeat. It's called Hunter's Chorus and is by Carl Maria von Wörther. The second is slower. It's a hymn and it's called Be Down My Vision. We would love if you could join us for our winter concert because of your support, the orchestra is the biggest it's ever been in North Hills history. There are 120 students in the middle school and high school combined, and in the district, there's a total of 350. So, thank you for your support and we hope you enjoy. We love the North Hills. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause) Thank you, students. Well done. Thank you. Okay, we can now move on to public recognition. I think Mrs. Beth Williams is here.
Good evening. The Advanced Placement Program created by College Board offers college-level curricula and examinations to high school students. As a result, colleges and universities may grant placement and course credits to those students who obtain high scores on the examinations. Each fall, the AP program recognizes students who have demonstrated outstanding achievement on multiple exams. To help you put this into perspective, at North Hills High School, 266 students took 478 AP exams last May, and nearly 70 percent scored a three or above on the exam's five-point scale, which earned them college credit. Forty-four seniors, or I'm sorry, 44 students qualified as AP scholars by completing three or more AP exams with scores of three or higher. Please help me in recognizing the following AP scholars who were able to be present this evening. Alex Glatz. Jordan Heranek. Jordan Heranek. And Alexis Lagus. I also want to recognize the other students who are unable to attend tonight. We have band practice for the band festival. We have tennis match. We have soccer practice. We have a lot of students in work, and believe it or not, we have a lot at home studying for exams tomorrow. So, those AP scholars who are not able to join us this evening included Maria Arlia, Erica DeGraff, Logan Graham, Samantha Logan, Andrew Longjohn, Mackenzie McFarland, Hallie McClintock, Dylan McWayne, Ryan McIntyre, Lauren Rabble, Shane Riley, Camille Trezak, Eleanor Urick, and Greta Ziewing. Who is, Logan, are you here? Did you sneak in? Because did you RSVP now? Okay. I had you as a note. Welcome, Logan. Logan, come on up.[590.98][590.98](applause) So, you got to steal the stage all by yourself, Logan. And if the rest of you are hiding out in that crowd and I missed you, please come on up when I call your name. That was a good try. Nineteen students qualified as AP scholars with honor by earning an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. Please help me congratulate our AP scholars with honor who are with us this evening. Alexis Mandel. Okay, she was just playing, so Alexis was here. She did a great job. And Neil Wyble. Neil, please tell me you're here. These kids are involved in so many activities, it's not a surprise that many of them could not be with us tonight. The AP scholars with honor who were unable to attend this evening, Kelsey Davis, Evan Karen, and Joe Pastoris. So, congratulations to those as well. Twenty-three students qualified as AP scholars with distinction by earning an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more exams. Please join me in congratulating our AP scholar with distinction who's joining us this evening, Neville Wolf. We had two other AP scholars with distinction who were unable to attend tonight, Aiden Gallagher and Elena Rao. That was great, Neville. I watched them sit down and stand up very quickly. That was awesome. And last but not least, I am very, very proud to announce that this year's North Hills High School has four National Merit semifinalists. This means that these students are the highest-scoring students in the state of Pennsylvania and represent less than 1 percent of PA's high school seniors. Please join me in congratulating these students this evening. Jordan Heranek. Giovanni Misner. And Neville Wolf. And our fourth. And our fourth National Merit semifinalist who was unable to attend is Connor Millavec. This is just another example of all the amazing things that I am proud to say take place at North Hills High School every single day. And as fabulous as these students' achievements are, I would be remiss in my responsibilities if I did not thank all of the teachers that assist them in reaching these amazing heights. So, to all the teachers, please know that we are very appreciative of all your efforts as well. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth, for the tremendous job you do up there at the high school. Thank you. We can now move on to board member comments, and before we take any board member comments, I just want to take this time to introduce our two new student representatives and ask them to speak a bit about themselves. So, we have Grace Clunin and Olav Carter.
Hi, everyone. I'm Grace Clunin. I'm currently a junior. I take mostly classes in science and math, but my real passion is language. I spent the summer studying abroad in Spain. And outside of school, I'm a varsity swimmer and a varsity rower with Three Rivers Rowing. And I like to bake and fix cars with my dad, so.
Grace, I have a car for you.
Hello. I am Olav Carter. I'm also a junior. I currently take a lot of math classes and science classes involving math, such as computer sciences, which is mostly math and computers put together. I also like filmmaking and editing, a lot of video production and such, and I think that's where I'm planning on going with my life, so.
Thank you. Thank you both. Thank you. Thank you. We really appreciate you being involved, both of you. Thank you so much. Beth, I'm going to ask you to step one more time.
Hi, again. I just wanted to let you know that we are pleased, again, to have our AP scholar with honor, which means, again, she has taken an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams, and a score of three or higher on four or more of these exams, the ever-talented Alexis Mandel. So, Alexis, come on up here so we can give you a round of.
Okay. Now, we can continue with board member comments, if there are any. Dr. Knowles, we'll start.
I've got one. I would just like to pick up on what Ms. Williams said about our marching band festival. Is this Saturday, 7:00 at Martorelli Stadium? And we've got the North Hills Band and Grillers open, so come early, have some dinner, enjoy some great music. And it's always a great night, so I hope to see you there.
Mrs. Bender.
First of all, I would like to welcome our two new board representatives, student representatives. And I told them, as I tell each of the new ones when they come, that the one thing we require of them is that they help and add to the board comments, because we are here for you as students, and we need to know what are the concerns of students. So, welcome. You're lucky to be with us all this time. My next thing was, and unfortunately, they all left except for one young man, I don't believe how many students we have who do so wonderfully well. And I know that it's due to our teachers, but it's also due to them, to you. I do believe in my heart that if I was in high school today, I probably would not graduate. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Muho.
Yeah, I would like to second that. Congratulations to all AP scholars. I think it's great that, you know, you guys just are so motivated to do that and skilled to do that. I just wanted to add to, I got a, I received an email this week, a couple days ago. I'd just like to share a little bit. I wanted to send an email to let you know what a great job the middle school coaches are doing with the program, oh, this is the middle school volleyball. Sorry. It is wonderful to have such a positive professional atmosphere. The coaches have been great with communicating with students and parents, and so easy to get in contact with. The instruction the students have been getting has also been great, so much improvement in a short time. I'm sure North Hills will see a positive outcome within the middle school program as well as in years to come. It's been such a great experience for myself and my daughter. And this was sent to myself and Ms. Shuniman, the athletic director, and just all our extracurricular activities. We want to be a learning experience and an enjoyable experience for the students, especially at the middle school, where, you know, they're forming the foundations of, you know, they're still very young and they're forming a foundation as they grow up. So, just, it was just great to receive an email like that and congratulations to all the coaches and keep up the good work.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have one thing. I guess I'm going to be maybe a bit of a killjoy here, but when I, I sent an email out to the board this week on an issue that I first raised on the board when I first joined, coming up on four years ago now.
Can you speak a little bit louder? I can't hear you down here.
Okay. I sent an email out to the board this week about an issue that I first raised when I joined the board four years ago pertaining to a longstanding practice in the district to reimburse board members for their home Internet use. At that time, I stated that I didn't think it was a practice that is valid any longer. I can understand why the practice would have been introduced when it was, I don't know how many years now, over 15, I'm thinking, when home Internet was not as ubiquitous as it is today, when it's virtually in every household. I stated that we all know, going into this job, we run for a volunteer position. It's a public service. We know going in that there's no compensation for it. So, I felt at the time that it wasn't a practice that was justified any longer. I raised a motion. Unfortunately, for me, only Mrs. Knowles agreed with me at that time, and the matter was put to bed for that time being, and I haven't raised it since then. But two things have happened since then which make me think that it's time to raise this again. One is our iPad initiative, where we now have iPads in the hands of our students in grades six through nine. And we learned from the administration recently that 97 percent of our families have home Internet access. That was on our documents from our recent data retrieve, which, that's a great, strong number. But that still means that 3 percent don't, and when you do the math, it equates to about 50 students that have iPads can't get the same 24/7 benefit that their classmates can get out of having those devices. So, it's my thought that if, you know, there's students in our district that can't afford Internet and can't afford to get the full impact of having that device, and certainly taxpayers shouldn't be paying for board members who run for a volunteer position to get that benefit. The other item is that we have, the past, ever since I've been on the board, we've been, unfortunately, we've had to introduce small tax increases each year in order to maintain our excellent programming and as well as pay for the exorbitant increases that we've seen in teachers' pensions. So, unfortunately, small tax increases have been necessary. But I don't think at a time when we're asking the community to shoulder an increased burden for taxes, that we should accept a benefit that more than makes up for the burden that we're asking the community to share. So, I would like to just raise that issue again and see if I could get a second for adding to the agenda the elimination of that, of that practice.
I will go ahead and second the motion because I think it is something worth discussing. My personal opinion on it is that I don't take the reimbursement. I never have and I never will. I've spent a lot of my professional career working.
Excuse me, can you speak up? I can't, I'm sorry. I can't hear down here. Can you hear?
Okay, I said that I would second the motion because I think it is something worth discussing. I think every board member needs to consider that and make their own decision. My personal feeling is that I've never taken the reimbursement and I never will. In my experience with nonprofits, it is not typical to reimburse volunteers for something that's an indirect expense, like an Internet service. If someone attends a conference, on behalf of the organization, that's a direct expense. That's typically reimbursed. Indirect expenses typically are not. So, from my own experience, I don't believe it's a good practice. That's my personal opinion. But like anything else that comes up before the board, I think every board member has to make their own decision and has to be something worth discussing.
Okay. Point of order, I don't think that that motion is appropriate at this part of the meeting.
I agree.
It should be done, it's another point. For the committee room, you tell us at what point we should do this.
Well, you know, the problem is, is that sometimes you do do motions when you're at comments by board members, so.
Okay.
You've done it in the past, so.
Give a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it improper now?
No, I don't think that it is, only because it's been done in the past, I know on, out of, out of board member comments, you've gone and done motions in seconds.
Now, should this be brought up for placement on the future agenda?
I was going to suggest. That's what the motion was, was to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I agree. I think they want to vote now. I would like to discuss this further, please. And I don't know if I can make a motion to put this. Table it. For our October meeting. I don't know if you have to. Oh, table it? Table it. I'd like to table this then, please. I second. I third.
Is there any other discussion on the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
It was the second.
Wait, the second, it was, we just voted to hold for discussion.
Table it.
For future discussion.
Yeah.
Right.
Probably for October's meeting.
For a future meeting. Right. I just wanted to make sure that was what I was voting on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's, I don't see any reason to go into the discussion now. I just think it's something that's been brought up and, you know, people should consider it and discuss it.
The two noes, excuse me, the two noes were Mr. Yeomans and Mr. Nudi. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, just a question, and what is this? Is this going to be under policy in the next meeting, or is this just a discussion?
I don't think it's a policy, is it? It's just a practice.
A practice. Well, I swore I wasn't going to say anything this evening. I was going to put tape over my mouth.
We're still under board comments. I said, we're still under board comments.
Yeah, but we tabled it.
I know, we did.
But can I still speak on it? No.
No, you can. It's board comments. We're still at board comments.
Okay, in regard to this motion not to reimburse school board directors reimbursement for their Internet service, things have changed. We have a lot on the board that are on fixed incomes. You know, they're not making beaucoup bucks. And as far as I'm concerned, and I will say this publicly, this tonight, what you are witnessing, is strictly a political maneuver. Mr. Yeomans is upset with me running. He's trying everything to get me to lose. This is one of the last meetings, and this is, I opposed him on that very vehemently when he projected that, and I want to know why. Why was Facebook first told of you removing this before you sent it to the board members? Why?
I put a blog post out on this after I emailed the board.
No. I got that on Facebook in the morning, and it was like, I forget the time on my, for my email, was mine at night. Everybody knew, the community knew about this before I did.
Well.
I happened to get it.
I think as board members, we're free to share our opinions on district matters with the community whenever we want.
Well, I see no problem with that. But after the board is informed, last week, you made something on Facebook, put a big article out, the board wasn't even informed of it. You put it to the community before us as board members knew about it. This is wrong.
Well, again, I brought this, this isn't the first time I've brought this up. I brought this up four years ago. When I first joined the board, I didn't think it was a good practice for the board. We run as volunteers. We run going in knowing that there's no compensation for this job. It's a, it's a community service, and I just, it's my personal feeling that this reimbursement practice is just a backdoor way of getting a small bit of compensation. Now, it's not a large amount of money, but again.
Well, do you believe in the dinners? Do you believe we should have dinner?
Yes. Yes, I do, and I put that in my blog post. There's perks to the job. We get dinners before board meetings. We get reimbursed if we travel on district business. We have our district-issued iPads. But we all had Internet service, or at least I did, before I joined the board, and we're all going to have it when we leave the board. So, why do the taxpayers need to foot the bill for our Internet? It's not like we're incurring an additional expense to serve on the board by having Internet. And that's just my, that's just the way I feel. I felt it four years ago. I feel it today, and for the reasons that I brought up, we're putting. that I brought up, we're putting iPads in the hands of children. There's families out there who truly can't afford to get the full benefit out of it. If this motion fails, I will bring up a motion that we pay for the home internet for any child in our district that cannot afford it.
Can I call the question, please?
Yeah, it's just comments. There isn't...
Because we should be discussing this later. These arguments...
It's already tabled.
Yeah, it is.
Yes.
It's tabled.
Are there any other comments?
I was going to say something, but I don't think this is something we could keep going at. But I would like to say, I don't think there's anything wrong with this small stipend. You're using your equipment. I personally like to have paper to read off of, so I use my ink and my paper. And believe me, what we get for compensation does not pay for that. That's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
We'll talk about it more when we go...
Yes, we will.
Any other comments?
I have two comments. First is, this morning I attended a class called "The Art of Making", conducted by the industrial engineering, or industrial engineering department. This was a phenomenal example of what this school district can do, and also that no other school district can do, because they don't have a CAD program, they don't have a metal shop, and they don't have students that are astute in using all of these tools. Right now, there are eight students involved. I think this class in the future is going to be a tremendous success, and will be able to be expanded to use all the disciplines in our technical education department. In essence, the students made a device that would squeeze the last bit of toothpaste out of a toothpaste tube. And this was done by a very short period of time, a matter of thirty minutes. They put together a design, and it was done on a collaborative basis with four students, put the design together. They did the CAD design. They did 3D printing. They went to the metal shop and did some drilling. It was a phenomenal program. And here again, I don't think there is another school district in the state that can offer this to their students because they don't have the resources we have. And the second item I'd like to bring up is, North Hills School District is partnering with QED for special screening and panel discussion of the Ken Burns, the Vietnam War. It'll be held here in the LGI Room on September 25. There will be student participation who are studying, there are nine students who are studying prisoners of war, and I do hope that one of those prisoners of war would be Charles Baldock, who graduated from Westview High School, which is, at the time, was not North Hills, but it was a precursor to North Hills. I hope he is one of the subjects that the students are studying. And after that, there will be a panel, after the screening, there will be a panel of Vietnam veterans who will be there to answer any questions about the war and their specific personal feelings about the war. So, now, it is on the website. An RSVP is required because there will be food served, so we would have to have some sort of an idea of how many people will be attending. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Nudi? Any other board comments? No more? Okay. We could move on. I believe there are no, there's nobody signed up for the public comments on the agenda items. Is that correct, Lori?
No one signed unless someone...
We do need to approve the minutes of the August 10, 2017 legislative meeting, so I will make a motion that the board approve the minutes from the August 10, 2017 work session legislative meeting per the attached.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I believe we don't have a solicitors report this evening.
No, we don't.
So I'm going to skip down on the agenda to, I guess it's the intergovernment, the community intergovernment relations, and we have to, I guess we have to vote on the PSBA slate of candidates. Lou, would you mind sort of just briefly?
As the PSBA liaison, I would like to recommend the following people be elected or be voted on by the North Hills School District for officers of the PSBA. Mr. Otto Voight is president, Mr. Eric Wolfgang is vice president, Mike Gossett is treasurer, Dan O'Keefe is the at-large representative from our particular area of the state, and Mary Ann Neal, who's a member of the PSBA Board of Trustees. I've worked closely with all of these people, and I can, I hold them all in high regard. And I would appreciate the board voting in the affirmative for these particular people.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on those candidates that Mr. Nudi has presented? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. What I'd like to do now is, because we, all the things that we discussed in the work session prior to this meeting have been discussed, and I think there's nothing really controversial on there, I'm going to ask for a consent motion to adopt the rest of the agenda as presented, unless anybody has an issue with that.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? I'm sorry, is there any discussion? I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So all the agenda items have been adopted, and we can move now down to, before we adjourn, to the additional public comments. Is there anybody here that would like to address the board? Okay, there being none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.